Good evening. Good evening, welcome attendees. Before we begin our proceedings, I'd like to highlight a few safety protocols and expectations. Based on the latest data science and guidance from the Kent County Health Department, we have extended the GRPS PK-12 mask mandate for all students, staff, and visitors until the end of the school year regardless of vaccination status. If you are in need of a mask, we do have them available at the entrances. Public comment cards and meeting agendas are also located on the tables within the board chambers at both entrances. Once you fill out a comment card, please submit it in the drop box next to the comment cards, and our board assistant will collect the cards when I call for public comment and deliver them to our board secretary. Individuals will then be called up one at a time to address the board at the presentation table. And on behalf of our superintendent, Dr. Lesion Roby, and the Board of Education, we do thank you for being here in attendance with us. If you please stand for the pleasure of allegiance.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Grant, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Grant, present. Ms. Lewis is excused. Reverend Mathias?
Present.
Ms. Shaki?
Here.
Mrs. Williams?
Present.
Dr. Baker?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Here.
Dr. Flores?
Present.
And President Ross.
Present. Thank you. And may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Support.
And we'll start with our celebrations, one of the best celebrations of the year. Mr. Harmson, Ms. Brown, looks like we're gonna celebrate our MLK Social Justice Legacy Contest winners.
Good evening, President Ross, Dr. Roby, and distinguished board members who are here to celebrate and congratulate the GRPS scholars who shared their voice, creativity, and skill in creating winning entries for the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Social Justice Legacy Contest. Thank you Warner, Norcross, and Judd for sponsoring this event for GRPS scholars for the past 16 years. It is my pleasure to introduce Malika Brown, Director of Equity and Inclusion.
Good evening again, President Ross, Dr. Roby, members of the board. And so, this is the 17th year that we've participated as a district. Our sixth graders participated in the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Social Justice Legacy Contest, which was formerly Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Essay Contest for sixth graders. And this is the fourth year that I've had the opportunity to be able to be the conduit between Warner and Grand Rapids. And every year just keeps getting better. It's very exciting to me to see the work that our students are able to put out. But I would like to introduce Ms. Courtney Phaler, who is Community Relations Manager for Warner, Norcross, and Judd, and is also my partner in crime on this project, to give a little bit of background.
Thank you, Malika. And thank you all so much for allowing us the space to come to the board meetings every year and highlight these students. It's a tremendous highlight at Warner, Norcross, and Judd, too. We really look forward to this contest and hearing from these children and they're young adults. I mean, this is like the threshold where they're kind of having that transition into the adult world and their perspective on life. And opening up the contest to any creative format, as Malika mentioned, has really put a shine on these students and given them a voice that's really unique and true and authentic to themselves where they can leverage their creative strengths. So, we're very excited to continue this partnership. I absolutely could not do this without Malika, so I do want to give a special shout out and thanks to Malika and all the teachers who implement this in their classrooms. Very, very grateful for that as well. We have a video that we're going to show in a moment that highlight this year's top three winners. We've switched to the video format because of COVID, but it's also been a really great tool to share in a variety of ways to highlight the students in this contest. You know, on social media, we're able to use it throughout the year. And then, the students were highlighted at the Grand Rapids MLK Community Celebration that took place on MLK Day. So they were able to be celebrated there as well. This year, we had our three top winners and 18 additional honorable mentions. All of these students did receive a gift card to We Are Lit Multicultural Bookshop, where they can purchase books, audiobooks, music, and it's a locally owned business as well, so we like giving back in that way. And before we play the video, we do have a lot of the students here today, and I'd like to read off this year's winners and honorable mentions. And at the end, they'll stand and we'd like to give them a brief recognition, and then we'll show the video. So, our first place winner this year was Adam Lobo with a poem entry. Second place was Julia Rezeki, who made a slide presentation. Third place is Sneha Dixit, who had a painting. And then our 18 honorable mentions, who had a variety of entries from pencil, drawings, posters, essays, poems. We had sculpture this year. We had a lyric interpretation of a Disney song. I mean, it was very creative. And these 18 students are Kesmira Newberg, Berulo Lopez Gomez, Pablo Roksha, Maya Onselme, Declan Murray, Aaliyah Banks, Xavier Peterson, Sophia Luz, Alexander Peterson, Abigail Olvin, Nam Tran, Zoe Wendereski, Sophia Upperali, Benjamin Han, Jose Ortiz, Milo Teeter, Ashley Campbell, and Lucy Kidder. And if any of the students are here, please stand. Thank you. You may have a seat. Their entries are judged by over 50 people at Warner volunteer to judge, and each submission is reviewed by four people, and then it goes to a final judging committee. And so, we have a really great, robust internal program, and it is so hard to pick the winners. I also want to acknowledge my colleague here, Mandis McAllister from Warner. She is our diversity manager at the firm and also helps out with this contest, too. And with that, I'd like to show this year's video so you can see the winners.
And before we do, I'd like to also recognize teachers and principals from our sixth grade buildings and schools. So if you're here, I know I saw a couple, we'd like for you to stand so that we can
This is our 17th year hosting the Dr. Martin Luther King Social Justice Contest in partnership with Grand Rapids Public Schools. And our hope is that students will leave feeling inspired to make change for the future and become more inclusive, equitable, and just for all. Allowing student submissions to be in any creative format has proven to provide us with entries that are deeply personal, inspiring, and thoughtful, giving us a really great insight into the thoughts and feelings of today's youth.
The Warner Dr. Martin Luther King Social Justice Legacy Contest means so much to GRPS, but not just GRPS as an institution, but to our students as far as opportunity to be able to express themselves, to be given an opportunity to think about social issues as it affects them, especially as 11- and 12-year-olds. And that's an opportunity that sometimes students don't get, to think outside of the four walls of their classroom, to think about how issues affect their families and their
I created it to tell people that what is happening in the world is wrong, that it shouldn't be happening. People are being mistreated, and they're even dying because of what is happening. I got the inspiration from the world around me, from the things that I hear and see. And I've heard and seen a lot of things, and some of them aren't that good. Like, I've heard that a person called Ahmed Avery, he was just jogging down the street, and people came with a gun, and they killed him for absolutely no reason, because he was black and they thought that he wasn't doing something right. We're all the same on the inside, and that's why my painting says that we are one. We need to have diversity, and people need to learn that diversity is a good thing, not a bad thing, and that it's okay to be different. You must feel the change you want to see in the world.
I got the inspiration for my grandma. She's from China, and I wanted to do something that not a lot of people were doing. It was a PowerPoint presentation. It says a lot about Asian hate crimes. It says some stuff about my grandmother, and it says a lot about massacres and Asian hate crimes back in America. The world is like really horrible right now because there's a lot of racism. I feel like Asian hate in schools really affects people because they may get made fun of for their culture, what they eat, what their family does, and it just, it's really bad. I don't think it's something that should be doing in education, and I think it could really affect people. I think it could spread more information on how Asians have been treated these last few years, and I think it could really put a difference in the world.
I got the idea for my poem is when I heard about George Floyd on TV. It really surprised me how people treated each other that way. It relates because people would get treated differently because of the way they look and the color of their skin. By Adam Lobo, "Black people need to be heard. People need to be heard, no matter if you hate. One person could change the world and make it great. Black lives matter. Hear their words. We can be together and push forward. As black people die, the world is not the same. Their families cry, and it's such a big shame. Death from riots, people are mad, all over the streets, most people are sad. A man said, 'I can't breathe. Do not let this happen again. Let this world be free, so no one ends up dead. Respect with honor in every way. They are not monsters. Do not let this happen, not on any day. People are different. Their skin color doesn't mean something. We can make the world magnificent. The world's not nothing. We can make it great. We can fix what we did wrong. It is not too late. People are strong.' One thing is just to treat people equally and fairly, and not just to treat them different for the way they look or like their religion or anything.
Thank you. Thank you.
Wow, impressive. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That brings us to a report of our student representatives. Ms. Carterone, Ms. Cruz. Well, excuse me. You know what I mean.[820.32][820.32](laughing)
You guys are missing all the fun.[823.13][823.13](laughing)
That definitely took a lot of people out.[833.75][833.75](laughing)
Sure. So yeah, excuse me. Ms. Carterone, Mr. Chisholm, any updates from you all?
So, last one. So we had our superintendent scholar advisory meeting. We had the opportunity to meet with the Building Managerial Services Department and the Food Services Department. So we were able to give pretty insightful feedback on custodial staff shortages, you know, the general state of the building, kind of building inside beautification, things like that. And then also, you know, we kind of were workshopping and talking about ideas like, you know, offering sort of in-district job opportunities through something like the custodial departments and things like that. We gave, obviously, you know, students have a lot of feedback on the Food Services Department in the district, so, you know, kids had a lot to say on that and a lot of pretty valuable feedback, I think. Another thing that we met about at this meeting was the city participatory budget. We met with several members of the city of Grand Rapids, essentially talking about this, I think $2 million, this allotment to spend over programs throughout the three wards of the city. Essentially, we just workshopped ideas, you know, general concepts of what we'd like to see, what we think would work, kind of short and long-term investment in our communities, in our neighborhoods. And I think that there's pretty valuable feedback on that. This last Sunday morning, we had a social justice conference put on by the youth organization for... Oh, did...
Was that Saturday?
Did I not say Saturday? I followed it. Okay. Saturday morning. I meant to say Saturday. Put on by the Youth Organization for Social Justice in Michigan. So, that was a pretty insightful meeting, pretty great meeting, put on by members of state academia and from University of Michigan, kind of state legal actors, you know, lawyers that are working within the field of social justice, and then also people who are just working on a community basis. So, that was attended by several members of the Superintendent Scholar Advisory Council. And then, apart from us, apart from even Grand Rapids representatives, there's students and youth attending from all over the state. So it was pretty insightful to kind of see youth action that's happening, not just in Grand Rapids, and not even just in, you know, the state's, you know, most, I guess, city center areas, but just seeing what's happening in really every community in the state was very interesting, very cool opportunity, and yeah.
Well, Friday was the luncheon with the legislators. I feel like everybody had very insightful things to say. It was really nice seeing how the other representatives also said a lot. It was nice to know that not just us had something to say, but also the other peers. I also went to an interview with Ron French, yes, Ron French, today with Michigan Bridge. There was definitely a lot of questions regarding the pandemic and how it's affected our education, our social life, our mental life. And there was quite a few students there. There was, I know that there was somebody from the Upper Peninsula because he was talking about being up north and how he had a snow day. So that was definitely something else, and there was, I feel like it's just, it's nice to know that it's just not us here in Grand Rapids, but definitely all over the state. And it was nice to get to know each, what each school had. Like, there was this one girl who talked about her being the captain of the Mental Health Committee, and it was something really nice because I asked her about it, and apparently she didn't start it. It had started before her. But it was something definitely that gave a lot of insight, and it was really nice.
Interesting. Well, you said that was mental health. Say that again. The last part sounded pretty interesting.
She said she had a mental health committee. I'm not sure exactly what the name was, but apparently, like, they do a whole, all sorts of things. They did a hot chocolate day for kindness day, and they do like handouts, and they do all sorts of activities for, like, the school to, like, raise awareness for the mental health and the stigmas around it.
Gotcha. Well, thank you. Thank you both. Appreciate you. It brings us to, oh, do we have any public comment cards for board agenda items? We do not. So, secretaries' report.
All right. For secretaries' report, I just have an update for committee meeting schedules. The first is that Policy Committee will be meeting on Wednesday, February 16th, at 5:00 PM here at the Franklin Campus. Legislative Committee will be meeting Monday, February 21st, at 5:00 PM, also here at Franklin Campus.
Thank you. Committee chair updates. We'll start with finance. Ms. Shaki?
Yeah, we had a very full January meeting, as we frequently do in January, especially as it is budget amendment time, and you'll be hearing more about that later on in the meeting from Mr. Oberst. But I do have a few highlights for you from our meeting. So first of all, as you look at the purchasing agenda tonight, you'll notice that we have hired a designer to synthesize the plans for the Southwest Playground. I know that's been a long time coming, and we're just so delighted to see that moving forward with a goal of construction this summer. So, back to budget amendments. In the words of Ms. Cribs, "This is the largest amendment. She has seen the general fund in her 20 years of being here. It is a big one. We can think many positive things, like a better-than-budgeted increase in per pupil funding allocation from the state. We expected 250, an increase of 250 per student, but we got 589, resulting in 8,700 per pupil in our district. We exceeded enrollment projections by 200 students, and also had a greater increase in property tax revenue than expected. There were significant compensation adjustments as well. News there, of course, we have vacancies that remain open and an increase in substitutes as a result of that, but overall increases in salary and wages as well, resulting in 1.7 million more than budgeted originally. Good news on the bond refunding front. You may remember back in December, we did vote to approve refunding of our bonds. We were able to refund those at 0.892%, saving the district $5 million over the life of the bond. That is some great news as well. We're also back up to an A3 rating, which is a good place to be for a public school district. SIR III funds, just a quick update there. So we filed our application on December 15th, and we are waiting on the Michigan Department of Education to approve that application. Reminder that SIR II and SIR III fund applications may be amended, but we can't spend any money on anything that has not been approved. Once approved, the SIR application will be posted online for transparency reporting. And those SIR III funds do have a spend date of June 2024, although we did receive a report that there is movement in the legislature, or at least advocacy, that perhaps public schools can look at extending that spend deadline beyond June of 2024. And then, lastly, I'll just report on the success of the vendor fair, and a huge thanks to Mrs. Williams for getting that moving in our district. We had 46 vendors attend the AM session, 16:00 in the afternoon, to learn how to do business with Grand Rapids Public Schools, and the district hopes to do this on a more frequent basis. So that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Policy Committee, Ms. Downs-Lewis is excused today. Ms. Lux, you gonna fill in for her?
Good evening, everybody. Policy Committee met on the 19th, and they made changes to one rule and one policy, both of which should be in your packets for this evening. They changed, they made some changes to Rule 4900, and what these changes primarily focused on is under Page 3, Paragraph 4, entitled "Advertising and Bids." And what they do is allow the board to advertise and request bids for the naming rights to district buildings that are either currently unnamed or whose naming rights are about to expire, and the purpose of this is to allow for an additional source of income for the district. The second change was made to Policy 8130, "Searches of Motorized Vehicles, Lockers, and Students." And there were two significant changes made to this policy. The first one was that we, the Policy Committee included language which allows, which directs how school personnel should search electronic devices owned by students, and it sets forth the policies and the procedures for that. The second change is that we included a very specific definition of a strip search. So how the policy is written now, or how it was written before the committee looked at it, was that the district is prohibited from performing strip searches of students, and the committee wanted to ensure that a strip search doesn't prevent district personnel from asking students to remove things like coats, or gloves, or hats, or other outerwear when reasonable and practical. And that, the policy's actually up for a first reading later on tonight in the agenda, but those were the two changes made, and that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, I'll report out, a couple of us had the pleasure of attending the Equity Symposium and Advocacy Institute in Washington, DC. Board members, Ms. Grant and I, had a chance to attend, and Superintendent Roby did attend as well. I know, Ms. Grant, if you have any highlights you want to share at this point? I can go first if you like.
That would be great.[1472.83][1472.83](laughing)
So no, again, it was the Equity Institute and the, excuse, Equity Symposium and Advocacy Institute. So the idea was, we had a day filled on Saturday of equity-focused content. Some of the highlights for me, you know, was a simple concept, but one thing that was presented was school districts sort of making a promise or a pledge to students and families that call the three E's, where every student who comes through the district will, when they finish graduating high school, they'll either be enrolled, enlisted, or employed somewhere. And I thought that that was just a very simple concept, but a concept that does seem to cover, you know, all aspects that any of our young people may want to do. I know we, you know, we often push college readiness, which of course is important, but at the same time, everyone has a desire, obviously, to go to college. And some people, obviously, may not necessarily go to work or go to college, and, but again, the idea is to do something, obviously. And enrolled, enlisted, and employed, at least to me, seem to cover, you know, all the reasonable bases. So, so again, there wasn't necessarily a lot offered as far as X's and O's on how to do that, but I did think of nothing else from a culture perspective that seemed to be, it just resonated with me for sure. Also, from an equity perspective, I did attend a workshop on confronting system inequity through policy, which seemed to be very important, obviously, from a board perspective. The presenter was energetic, I will say the least. She gave examples of her tenure as board president in a district in Arizona, and, you know, just some of the things that she really advocated for was an effort of increased accountability through board policy. There was another presentation that I found interesting about trauma and insensitivity, unintentional insensitivity by schools, and some of those things just were dealing with behavior management and disciplinary issues that, of course, unintentionally, districts can be insensitive to a student's sort of personal or emotional state through some of the disciplinary or behavior management policies. So, just some interesting things offered there for food for thought. And then Advocacy Institute kicked off on Sunday, or maybe that was Monday, but the primary pieces with that were trying to engage with our legislatures and elected officials in Washington, pretty much surrounding our legislative agenda, but also focusing on the individual, excuse me, Individual Disabilities Educational Act, which I found pretty interesting when it was passed in 1974, I believe it is, '75. There was a national pledge, there was a pledge by Congress to fund 40% of disability support services across in our K-12 schools. And right now, that amount is about 15.7% that the federal government picks up. So, obviously, we've never gotten closer to 40%, and as we know, in a high-need district, sometime that is a small weight to bear with some of the supports that we need for some of those students. So, so that was one of the biggest pieces of advocacy. Another advocacy element was extension of the SIR funds. You know, we got those in buckets, and they all have sort of expiration dates on them. And we never thought we'd have the problem of having too much money to spend, but with the limited amount of time, and you don't want to just spend money without being strategic, so there's some advocacy to try to hope to get that extended, and as well, trying to get our people to support the infrastructure bill, particularly as it relates to the technology components and Wi-Fi components and things like that, and rural areas, and some of our clusters within some of the inner cities. So, those were some highlights for me. I don't know, Ms. Grant, if you have anything you'd like to offer?
Yes, I will add just a few notes. I also attended the session that focused on policy when it came to advocacy and equity. And the presenter made a few interesting comments about programs or systems that they set in place when a new superintendent was coming in. And although we're a few years in with Dr. Roby, we have not had a normal year yet, so I will be sharing some of those things with the full board, and would love to hear your feedback on maybe some supports that we can put in place. She's had a few hard years, but they may help her once things even out and become normal again. So, that was really interesting to me. Also, another thing with equity, really having a conversation about how is the district recognizing a full calendar, not just a Christian-based calendar, to really respect the beliefs of all students, and also to understand some of the differences, it will give the district deeper insight if students aren't present on a certain day, or they're not eating on a certain day, and just making sure that we are really well-versed in the students that we have in our district and that we're... in the students that we have in our district and that we're being aware of who they are. There was a student panel as well for the Advocacy Institute, and I think most of us were present Friday for the legislative luncheon, where we also had students speaking. And between those two different panels with students, it just really, first of all, I want to give kudos to everybody who helped work on that luncheon. It was absolutely amazing. Thank you to our student representatives. Your voice was really powerful, and we appreciate that, but it just also led me to think about how we are empowering student voice. I don't think any of us could have spoken better at the luncheon than the students, and the students on the panel, in the same way, they're able to say some things without the gray area that we have. And so, I just want to encourage that we keep that up. Those things really stood out to me. And then, as always, we're having conversations with legislators about not only the ESER funds, but looking at teacher retention, teacher recruitment, and other key things on our legislative platform.
Thank you. Well, Dr. Roby, I don't know if you have any comments about that, but Superintendent's report is next, so if you do, of course, you can offer.
Sure. This was my first symposium, and I was just in awe of the entire experience. We had one of our keynotes. It was a young man out of Arizona who was a national wrestler, and his name was Anthony Robles, and what's interesting about Anthony is that he was born with one leg. And as he described how he overcame obstacles and that belief, and so it was never from a place of like, "Look at me, I, you know, I have this disability." It was very much an asset base, and he was born to a teenage mother. His mother was 16 when she had him, and so I was just thinking about kind of the narrative that oftentimes we put on people when we don't fully understand their situation, and it was the complete opposite, that this young man had all of these things, and it was his attitude and those around him who believed in him when things got tough. But to be able to wrestle and become a national champion, and he has a sponsorship with Nike of all places, and I thought, you know, the things that we sometimes complain about as, that oftentimes seem very small, and when you hear of someone else's story of resilience and also triumph, it really just kind of doubles down. And so, I was appreciative of that around looking at ableism as a form of equity, because oftentimes we only look at equity from a place of race and language, but there's also that other piece of ableism when those who may have some difficulties physically that can sometimes be a barrier. So, I just wanted to make sure I acknowledge that as well. As far as my report, reminder to everyone that we are upon our Spring Count Day. It will be this coming Wednesday, February 9th. We want every healthy body to be in school on Wednesday. It will be a no uniform day for students. We have given that information to building principals, and they'll certainly share that with student bodies tomorrow to remind them that it is a, it is an important day because it affects our funding for the upcoming school year. And so, we really want people to be present if they are healthy and well. We are never going to tell people to come to school sick, because, you know, pandemic, but we want to make sure that if you are healthy and well, to please come to school on Wednesday for Count Day, and every day, but especially for Count Day. I'm gonna ask Mr. Obers to come up, as he's going to give an update around the ESER funds. As you know, there are several ESER I, II, and III that take place within, with our federal dollars, and what we have made a commitment to is to keep ongoing engagement around our ESER funds, what we spent our resources on, what is more to come, and then what are some barriers that we've come across with the shipping and the bottleneck with supply chain and things of that nature, and then also how we've continually engaged our community. I know that Mr. Obers will kind of do a highlight of the meeting that he and Dr. Berman had last week with teachers and other opportunities that we will continue to do for our community for engagement to make sure as time rolls on that we are keeping people updated and informed. And then, just as a quick reminder, each month or so, every six weeks or so, we've done smaller presentations where we've had different district leaders report on their ESER plans and how it ties into the overall ESER budget. So, Mr. Obers?
Great. Good evening, President Ross, Superintendent Dr. Roby, and board members. Yes, a brief update on the ESER spending. As we move forward on these, all these programs, we'll continue to give this board updates as to where things stand. So, if we go way back to June of 2020, thereabouts, ESER I was the first allocation of ESER dollars, and that was the only bucket of ESER dollars that we were required to share with the non-public schools. After that, they got their own bucket of dollars, if you will. So, they were allocated in the fall of 2020. We got, our portion of it was 7.7 million, and has a spending deadline of June of this year. These are some of the major areas. We spent the ESER I dollars on, technology, some curriculum, increase in translation costs of translation services, special ed, a lot in the staff costs related to custodial MIS security, and then we also get an indirect amount of $441,000. All those funds have been expended. So, we still have some dollars outstanding for the non-public schools, but the GRPS portion has all been expended already, and so there's no more ESER I available to us. ESER II, they were allocated fully in the fall of 2021. We filed our application, and that application was approved just prior to the holiday break back in December. That has a spending deadline of June of 2023, and it totals 32.8 million, 32.8 million. ESER II application can be amended without restrictions. We can't go over the 32.8 million, but we can change how we spend that money, and so we can do that amendment anytime we want to. The summary of the budget, the 32.8 million, what was on that application, the major areas, technology, again, seven, almost seven and a half million dollars there. We needed to replace maintenance and security vehicles. It totals 1.1 million. Last year, summer school, 2021, $2.3 million of ESER II dollars were spent on summer school. A lot of different aspects of curriculum are in that budget of totally about $7 million. Transportation costs of 2.7, again, additional staff costs, and this is really the way, this 11.6 million is a way we are building our general fund balance. Remember, when we first talked about the ESER money, we wanted to build that fund balance, so we are paying some of our custodial MIS security people costs to 11.6 million, and again, the indirect of $763,000. Now, the ESER II, what you see here is consistent with that initial investment plan that you approved back in July for ESER II and ESER III. So, right now, everything you see here was on that initial spending plan for ESER II and III. Between ESER II and III, at this point in time, we spent approximately $20 million of the ESER II and ESER III dollars. The ESER III dollars total about 74 million. However, only 48.3 million has been allocated. That's all we were allowed to apply for at this point in time, and that has a approximately June 2024 spending deadline. The application was filed on December 15th of last year. We are currently awaiting for the MDE's action on the application, and MDE has informed all school districts that they are not going to give any estimates as to when they'll get to these applications. We know they've approved smaller districts. Our application, well, I believe, was like 32 pages long, very involved, very detailed, so it's going to take a little bit longer for them to get to it and to review it. They have capacity issues too at the Department of Education in terms of reviewing all these applications. It's a separate application, the ESER I and ESER II. ESER I and ESER II were in the same application. ESER III is a separate, more involved, more complicated, more administratively complex application. The spending budget that we've allocated, the 48.3 million operations, equipment, so that's additional cleaning equipment for buildings, 1.1 million. Again, additional technology, 8.3 million. A lot of that technology will be focused on in-classroom technology as we're back in the classrooms now. Curriculum, which include field trips and other academic supports, Tier I's, Tier II, after-school supports, tutoring, all those kinds of things, 16.8 million. Other transportation, about 2.7 million. Item 15 of the spending guidelines allows us to spend ESER, all the ESER money, to maintain the operations of the district, to pay our employees and our contractors. We have $21 million of the ESER III dollars to do that. A lot of that, we're gonna spend general fund dollars to fund some of those capital expenditures that you may recall approving. HVAC upgrades of our older buildings, playgrounds, parking lots, and upgrades, all kinds of things. We're spending those out of the general fund, and so part of this 21 million will go to essentially reimburse a general fund, if you will, and then again, an indirect of 1.1 million. Superintendent mentioned, over the last couple of months, we've, part of the ESER III application, we've talked about this before, is required input, meaningful input from stakeholders, and we've really started that back in March of 2021, before we even had guidance. And since that point in time, additional guidance has come out. We met with the Student Leadership Group back in October, November, I can't recall. We met with the Parent Action Leaders in December, and actually, had a follow-up meeting last month with them. And then, we've had had some input from teachers. We got the whole teacher group together just last week, I think it was now, and met with, I think there was excess of 40 teachers, went over the spending plan and got their input. So, we will use that additional input. A lot of it, one of the things we asked the teachers last week was the initial plan. What do you like? What don't you like? What are the modifications? By and large, they were happy with our allocations. All the groups we've met with recently, a common theme has been the mental health, social, emotional supports for our students that we continue to work on, and that, but we'll make some adjustments. When the additional ESER III dollars are released to get us to 74 million, we will have to file a new application to budget for that, and so we'll make some of those adjustments and other additions, changes, whatever. And of course, as we go on and spend this money, we're finding out that there are some adjustments we need to make, and ESER III having until June of 2024. Now, one of the challenges we've run into already with the supply chain challenges and the talent challenges, some of the programs, tutoring, those kinds of things, require additional talent, mental health workers. We're still trying to hire some as employees. It's been challenging. We are already planning some of the construction projects. We've mentioned you'll see tonight on the purchasing agenda, the design for Southwest, but the other eight or nine playgrounds, we are in the process of designing that now. And as we look out, talk with contractors, and this actually goes for some of our bond projects, we're still working, Innovation Central is a, man, oh, man, we're running into problems with, any issues with getting those things done. A challenge, as you know, we have as a school district, is you can't do major renovations in the building or playgrounds during school. So, we have limited time for the summer, potentially during breaks, get that work done, and to schedule out and get the stuff spent by June of 24, 2024, is going to be challenging. Even buying, we have some additional vehicles we need to buy. Mr. Johnson just mentioned, he met with one of the local auto dealers yesterday and done some additional vehicles. Earliest they can get us, spring of 2023, spring of 2023, a year from now. So, we are hopeful that the federal government will extend at least the deadline in ESER III beyond the 2024 timeline, but we can't guarantee that. So, as time goes on, we'll have to look at some additional strategies if we have to have everything spent by 2024 to preserve those dollars. Again, what we don't spend goes back to the federal government. We cannot carry it over. We cannot carry it over. So, that is a brief update on ESER. Any questions I can answer for the board on two or three in particular, so?
If I can just add before board members pose questions, that's one of the things that we've done as part of our Advocacy Institute that we were speaking about earlier, where as we talk with other districts across the nation, and then also here in the state of Michigan, everybody is running into the same issue that you have resources financially, which is a great spot to be in, but because of the other kind of components where things are so backed up, we need the extension if we want to see these realized. And, you know, in my nearly 30-year career, I've never had an issue where we have money and can't adequately spend it because of these backups, and that's an issue across the nation. And so, we are gonna need some concessions and consideration around that so we can actualize and support our programs as we would like to. Both nationally and also at the state level that we're advocating for some grace in that area.
Any questions from, one question though, Mr. Obers, the can be amended without restriction. Is that prior to approval or word from the state that we can amend, or?
Yeah, I mean practically, we're an ESER III, we'll wait till we get the first, till we get their first act on their first application. But you may recall, we amended ESER I, I think, twice. ESER II, much like ESER III, they only allocated a portion of it to begin with. So, we filed an application for that first portion, then when the remainder was allocated, we filed an amended application. So, we've done that once already. We're already running into changes in the ESER II. And again, we can only spend, as Dr. Obers mentioned earlier, we can only spend what's on the application, so we have to make sure that the final application is really what we spent, because when they come, and they will, when they come audit us down the road here, what, if we spend that's not in the application, then we have to pay it back. So, it's, as I've said before, this has become a very much of an administrative challenge of the business office, keeping track of all these buckets of dollars and make sure they get spent according to plan, so.
Gotcha. And while I don't have any amendment that I'm trying to recommend, I'm just trying to be clear. So, we have the ability to amend our application. I guess that timeframe, I'm just trying to get some clarity on.
Timeframe, yeah. Right now, timeframe doesn't change, but anytime between now and the spending deadline, we have the ability to amend our application. So, clearly, what we'll, looking ahead, what we'll do is, as we get to the end of these ESER II, ESER III timelines, we'll probably file a one last amendment to make sure it lines up exactly the way we spent things, so.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, great.
I have a question with regards to, I know, early on, there was little guidance and unclear guidance with regards to what ESER funds could be used for, per se, and we were taking a fairly conservative approach. Have we amended that approach as we've gotten more understanding to really address the needs of the district?
We, yeah, I mean, again, we have got some understanding by virtue of the ESER II application's been approved and everything, and we had actually started spending ESER II dollars before the final approval, but it all came back just fine. ESER III, we were frankly more aggressive, so that's why we're sitting tight. We have spent about a million, million and a half of ESER III dollars, but they're in areas where we're real confident that it's allowable, but there are some expenditure areas on that we're not sure, and so that's why we're anxious to hear back from MDE as to what their thoughts are on that. And, you know, we, honest, we believe, business office, myself as CFO, and of course Rhonda, working closely, and the rest of the team, we believe, and we filed the application, ESER III, we have a basis, a support for everything that's on that application, whether they agree with us or not, it's another question, but we'll see. So, okay?
Similar to Ms. Williams, I'm wondering if, with all of the district input, you know, all of the folks, the teachers, the parents, students, what changes did you guys make as a result of that input?
Well, yeah, some of the changes, yeah, some of the changes, one I can touch on in particular with, when I met with the Parent Action Committee leaders, excuse me, they had some questions on some additional playground modifications, and so we've added, we added a couple playgrounds to the initial capital plan. You know, one of the, we looked at some of the initial investments and some of the academic support services. We're probably gonna tweak a little bit based on not only what we heard from some of these groups, but, you know, we've been on not only what we heard from some of these groups, but, you know, we've been in class now since, since August, as you know, and as we, in class, we're seeing what's working, what's not working, in terms of, we may have to make some, probably will make some adjustments to some of those academic support services, those kinds of things, so.
Another quick example of that for academic support services, we had intercession school for the very first time, and that was not something on the original plan. Intercession, as a reminder, was the program that we offered for scholars over the winter break recess, and that came from how do we get more time for, for our scholars? So we are, it is a fluid plan where we do take that input and see where we can make some changes where it makes sense.
Thank you, Ms. Obers.
Mm-hmm.
All right. And so the last part of my superintendent's report actually is an update from the Greenway team and Mr. Helmuth. They're going to talk about the phase initiatives. As you know, we are coming towards the, the point of, we'll be rolling out a full plan and when it will be implemented, and this is kind of the initiative phase. Last month, we had our groups talk through, each group presented the overview of each of the outcomes, and they shared what work they were doing, and then this is kind of that next step of adding the activities and the initiatives. So I'm going to turn it over to Martha and John.
All right, Superintendent Robey, President Ross, members of the board. It's great to be here again. We're getting near the end of this kind of journey. We've been on this for just under a year. It was March of last year when we kicked this off, and there's been just tremendous amount of engagement from the beginning, the middle, and the end. I want to give a special shout out again to the six strategic theme team leaders who have been working since you voted for, to approve the strategic plan framework in November. And as a result of that work, we now have a number of draft initiatives that have been further refined after additional input and additional time was allowed for more input. And so we're excited to really kick this off today. This is just an update on some of the revisions to the initiatives, some next steps on the initiative action planning, which kicks off tomorrow with a two-hour training with a number of individuals from the strategic theme teams, cabinet, and others. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Martha Greenway. Just want to, again, also thank Martha and Stacy and her team, they've been remarkable in facilitating this process, and we're just very grateful, so.
Thank you, we're glad to be here. Good evening, board members, Dr. Robey. And again, I'll reintroduce my colleague Stacy Lynch, she was here with the board way back when we started with the board retreat, and she's joining me again for this trip. So I'd like to just remind the board that this is what you voted on on November 8th, the priority outcomes and the themes and objectives. And so what we have been working on over these past several months is essentially filling in the strategic initiatives, which represents the superintendent and administration's work to accomplish the objectives within the themes that the board has approved in order to achieve these priority outcomes. So as we think about strategic initiatives, it is important to kind of keep things at the right level, sort of smaller than a refrigerator and bigger than a toaster, I like to say, there's like no magic right or wrong, but we are talking about things that result in sustained changes in practices and approaches. The one lever the district has is what the people who work in the district do and how they do it. And so the initiatives are really about changing the practices of those who work in the district. Targeting observable tangible changes in district staff, staff behavior through things that are not episodic events or activities. So there may be events or activities as part of an initiative, but an initiative is something that is sustained over time. They may involve a specific externally marketed product, but as I think we've all learned in our work in education, solutions don't come in a box. Buying something, installing a software program, that does not bring about sustained change unless you change the practices of the people in the system. Generally, these will be cross-functional, multifaceted efforts, so the people who will be working on these implementation teams will come from across the school district, and they have to connect performance on one or more of those priority scholar outcomes. So John referenced the six theme team leaders, and I also want to just express my appreciation and also how impressed I was with these folks and the hard, dedicated work that they made to this effort. I'm also going to share quickly the team members. There were representatives from across the district staff and also from across the community in this process, through which they engaged stakeholders, they reviewed a lot of stakeholder input, they conducted research on effective practices within the district and also outside of the district to really have a research-based, stakeholder-focused response to how to best achieve the objectives in each strategic theme.
And we have access to these slides, all right?
Yep, yep. This has actually already been posted to the website on the strategic planning page, and we will be emailing it out to the whole world tomorrow morning.
Perfect.
Yeah.
She's moving a little fast, this is something I know we've presented before, but yeah.
So we just also want to reference that in this particular part of the work, there was a community open house for dialogue and feedback with the team members on these strategic theme initiatives, and a virtual input opportunity that had over, had over 400 participants. And so all of that feedback informed the work, and so since you saw this last, there have been some slight changes to language based on the feedback. I do want to point out that each team produced a document, not just this one sentence you're seeing today, but a document that codifies all of the research that they've gathered, that documents the stakeholder feedback that was important, that has a section about important things for implementation, so that as this goes to the next stage, all of their research is going with it. So those products actually are available if the board cares to look at those, but as we move into the next phase, all of that research will come along. So in addition to showing some slightly revised and integrated language, I do also want to talk a little bit about the factors to consider in staging the initiatives. So you have ended up with 30 strategic initiatives across these six themes, you cannot clearly implement all of those things at one time. So in order to ensure the district's successful, we have worked with the executive cabinet to think about how we determine which ones should go first. We're very intentional about not using the word prioritization, because it doesn't mean that some are more important than others. It simply means that there are reasons why some things go before others. And these are the general considerations that we suggest you consider. So contingency means this has to happen before other things. Alignment, many of the initiatives that are in stage one, there are actually 16 of the 30, but part of the reason that there's slightly more than half is that a lot of work's already going on. So if you have things in flight, so to speak, you want those to be aligned with the strategic plan, you don't want those to be out here running separately. So in a way, much of the work has been brought under the strategic plan, and will now be given this renewed strategic focus going forward. Urgency, there's internal or external factors that are creating pressure for the work to begin, and often there's a risk of negative consequences. So it's going to get worse or become more problematic if we don't do something about it. Opportunity, there are potential partners or supporters available. So you'll see that many of the initiatives moving forward reflect some of the opportunities with the ESER funding to go ahead and get started on those. And then expectation, there are several areas where stakeholders repeatedly brought forth the same ideas or desires, and so it's important to demonstrate, we heard that and we're moving forward on those. But also, as we look across all the initiative, we have to be clear that we're not overloading things that are going to take a lot of new resources in the same stage, that we're not overloading staff all in the same area with too much to do. And in some cases, some of these initiatives may create a little bit of unrest or discomfort, and so you don't want too many of those all at once, because that puts too much stress on the system. So that's kind of the rationale that was used. So this is definitely an eye chart, but I just want to give you a sense of what this looks like. So those are your 30 strategic initiatives, and the ones in purple are the ones recommended for stage one. So one of the things that we did, is it not showing here?
That one, it looks black, maybe it just looked black to me, but here it's easier to see.
Oh, sorry about that.
No, no.
Okay. So the first three are purple, or should be. One of the things I will note is that there was some overlap in what you saw before. So one of the areas where there was a lot of overlap were these reciprocal feedback loops with various stakeholders. So we have placed those at one place or another in the plan so that they're not duplicative. That's most of what changed, in addition to some wording that reflected the stakeholder input. So in strategic theme one, the first three around increasing scholar engagement and influence were deemed to be the most critical to go into stage one. So that's social, emotional, behavioral, health and support, feedback loops for scholars, and positive strategies to address scholar behavior. And theme two, which is the one about optimize and value all school options, this theme has one objective, which is a hugely significant one, and we're going to start that work through telling our stories. So the intentional multifaceted marketing campaign for every single school in the district is the starting point for that one. Ensure equitable access and outcomes. So you can see there is the one around promoting a culture of belonging, there is the one around transforming disciplinary practices and consequences that disproportionately impact Black scholars, which is one of the outcomes that is called out. And then more generally, an ongoing system to review and assess policies and systems to identify and remedy potentially exclusionary and biased practices. So that could conceivably include discipline, so as we do this work, we're going to be careful that we stay in the lane, if you will. So if we think about 2A being about discipline, what 2B is really about are all of the other things that have an unintentional consequence of excluding some students. And so these include things like prerequisite for certain courses, qualifications for AP courses, criteria for getting into the talented and gifted types of programs, criteria for acceptance at theme schools, like anything that has a sorting is used as a sorting criteria ensuring that those are not biased in their implementation, is what 2B is about. Four, starting with 2A, develop and adopt a district-wide college and career framework, supporting scholars in making a choice of a college career pathway. So there is a lot of work already undergo, underway in the district, there's the fabulous partnership with the two college through college groups, so there's a lot of energy around that to move that one forward. Theme five, this is the one about an engaged impactful, more diverse workforce. In my mind, the, the contingency really plays out here, because if you don't have the right people in place to do all of this work, then you're not going to be able to move it forward. So standardize and refining the hiring process, utilizing a DEI lens, strengthening partnerships with employee pipeline organizations, develop an employee appreciation recognition process so you're not just being attentive to bringing in new people, but also honoring and retaining the people you have, and ensuring that the employment package remains competitive, responsive, and progressive. I know the board just did a salary study, so this would, you know, kind of fall into thinking about the implementation of that. And then as a reminder, the board added theme six following the stakeholder engagement. And so there, in this one, we are seeing initiatives move forward against all three objectives. So we have seen initiatives around the engagement of scholars, and this initiative is then around having ongoing processes for collaborative relationships with caregivers and community Similar but distinct is to establish and communicate effective policies and procedures to facilitate aligned and impactful partnerships, so ensuring that there are internal systems in place that encourage and, and facilitate impactful partnerships. I will also add that I think in the areas of social, emotional learning and some of the other areas of student need particularly is impacted by COVID, community partners can go a long way in helping to supplement the district resources, but that pathway has, has some kinks in it, so this is really an opportunity to do that as well. Create a long-term plan to provide ongoing accessible district and school-wide fiscal analysis, transparency, and sustainability. So this again was an idea that the board added. And then lastly, ensure that stakeholders actively understand and participate in the district budgeting process. So I'll just pause here, the next thing I'll talk about very briefly is where we're going from here, but are there any questions that the board members have at this point?
I actually have a question, if that's all right. You may have mentioned this already, and maybe I just missed it, but I guess in line with this last strategic theme, I had a question as to, is there a sort of plan in place on keeping in touch with specifically the student body during the implementation of this new strategic plan in order to make sure, on the specific success of programs that are targeting inclusion of, you know, the student body, you know, biases and things like that? Is there a plan in place in order to stay consistently connected with the student body in terms of the effectiveness of these implementations?
Yes, you might recall from the first strategic theme number one, that scholar input was one example. Part of this next process is also, as we do the initiative action planning, that will include how we do report outs, how we put a spotlight and do transparency. There's also, we're looking at an internal, external strategic plan stakeholder committee that would serve an advisory capacity, that would kind of get the regular reports and help play a role in not only reporting back to the Board of Education, to our scholars, but other stakeholders throughout the district. That still has to be finalized, but that is absolutely part of the intent of this strategic plan, the initiative of action planning. And I, just speaking a little bit for Dr. Robey, our scholars' voice is a top priority. I think you two in particular, if I may give you a little shine for the work that you did on Friday with the legislative lunch, that was an example of how we're intentionally engaging our scholars. You're playing a role in not only advocating for the interest of the district and schools, but for your future and for your today. I think Jackie, you had the quote, or maybe it was your colleague, about, we're always talking about doing plans for, for the future of our students, but we need things to happen today, because some, you are on the brink of graduating, and so I think that is further example of our commitment of this board and this administration's commitment to uplifting scholar voice and on a continuous, ongoing basis.
I do have a question. So for the, for the third objective here, the ensure financial sustainability piece, I just want to make sure that I understand the initiatives around that, and perhaps I'm, I'm missing something, but I, I see language talking about budgeting, transparency, analysis, but specifically when we included that piece, the conversation was more about making sure that the district was able to provide revenue for itself in fine ways that were creative and within our reach that would provide, the language that we were using around sustainability was revenue producing so that the district was sustainable? And I, maybe I'm missing it, can you explain to me how the initiatives lead us to that as well?
I'll chime in on that a little bit. So 3A is probably the most direct, where we talk about there needs to be a comprehensive, long-term plan to provide ongoing accessible district and school-level analysis, transparency, and sustainability. I think sustainability is the catch-all phrase that says, that's everything looking at expenses, but also at revenue. And if we're going to do an overall fiscal analysis, it's going to look at it from both sides of that balance sheet. And then I also think as you look at establishing and creating those policies for aligned and impactful partnerships, that's in a similar vein where we, we know first and foremost, we need to make sure we have clear, consistent, uniform policies and practices for how our external partners can, can come alongside the district, come alongside our schools, and be part of the energy excitement of this strategic plan. Once we have that, then along with that long-term plan, we can then facilitate maybe more public-private partnerships or public, public partnerships, much like we do with the city of Grand Rapids on some of our green space and, and playground and parkland improvements. So it's, it's a little bit more of a, of a broader language, but it's intended for the initiative action planning teams to then drill in deeper as to what that would look like.
Are we?
Are we against being more specific about that? Since this is a long-living document, I feel like that intent can be lost. But I do feel like the conversation that we had as a board with that is really important. I know there was some pushback on the other side about, is that a district's job to create revenue? But just knowing the situation that we're in as a district, depending on state and federal funds, I believe we all said it is our responsibility to make sure that we're creating revenue and not relying just on outside sources. So it's just my particular opinion, with it being such a long-living document, it would be great if the language is a little bit clearer about that intent. I don't know how my colleagues feel.
I'll chime in. Go ahead, Tony.
I think that, I mean, we have a situation now where we're trying to figure out how to prioritize, maybe not would be the best term, but what do we do with the budget that we have now, which is unexpected? Increase funding from the federal level and increase. And so those are the levels. In terms of us spending, I don't know what. I think that there are ways that we can reduce costs through some revenue opportunities, but I don't see us creating an office that creates revenue-producing opportu... I don't know what that means. I mean, I don't know what you mean by revenue-producing. So I'm not sure it's buying property and investing in property, or what?
I think as a board, we have had some really specific conversations about how the district can use assets to create revenue that we don't necessarily, you know, have to discuss at this time. But this isn't, I don't think we've ever discussed opening a new office or any of those things. But what we did discuss in detail is that as a district, it's really wonderful that we have excess dollars now. But that is not, wasn't the case yesterday, and it's not the guaranteed case tomorrow. Those dollars that we have are for a very specific use. So there are a lot of things that those dollars can't cover. So what we're saying is that we want to make sure, what I believe we said, is that we wanted to make sure that the, that a focus of ours is making sure the district is able to sustain itself in the future for the students that we have.
Yeah, along those same lines. I think that, I think the conversation for me is, great if we have a great open door, but if they're leaving through the back door, then we have an issue. We got to talk about, what is it that's going to bring families back and keep them? Or what is it that we're not doing that's continuing to, I hate to use the word hemorrhage, but if it is that, what do we do to discuss those issues? Because some of those things, I suspect, are not going to be just, you know, safety in our schools. They're going to be the thing that we teach, the thing that we're doing as a district. And we need to have, we need to have the courage to have those kinds of conversations as people start looking and saying, I want to go there, or I want my kid to go there because XYZ. And so I would think that that would create revenue in one sense, but then also, you know, allow us to continue to be an option in the city, particularly the urban context. Because it's not just our students, Caucasian students that are leaving, it's also our students of color that are leaving our school district. So I think it's important to converse about those issues, if those are issues, so that we can, so that we can close that back door and continue to provide an opportunity to receive back students that, or families that have gone for whatever the reasons are.
Yeah, I think Reverend Mathias, you know, you're on point. That's definitely all a part of the sustainability conversation. And Ms. Grant, I guess you did ask a specific question about language that truly articulates sort of what the board's thinking was. And if I'm understanding you correctly, your concern is, over time, since this is such a long-lived document, over time, and board turnover and everything else, the intentionality behind that could be lost with sort of the general.
It doesn't seem as clear to me, since initiatives are supposed to be the actual, like, plan. This is what we're doing. It just doesn't seem as clear to me. And I guess the question that I was asking is, if I misinterpreted what my colleagues, what that conversation was. Because if I did, then, and if we're all fine with the language, then that's, that's fine. But this was an extensive conversation that we had.
If I can add that with each of the themes, objectives, and initiatives, there has to be measures, and that's kind of that next level. So if we do all the things that we say out of the 30 different initiatives over the time of this document, then we should have measurable goals to say, what is our goal to, you know, how do we know that we're successful? And that's kind of where that next step should be, to say, okay, if we do all these things, then is our goal to have a, and I'm just, I don't want to go down a rabbit hole with our group, but do we want to have, you know, X number of dollars as our fund balance? Or what, you know, or X number of students? That's kind of how you tie all these things back together. And then the other thing that I want to make sure that everybody understands to Mrs. Grant's point related to this document, it's a longstanding document, but the theme should be consistent. The approach may be different as time goes on, based around the data and things that we may have. And so as we are trying to plan for what this looks like for the next five years, there may be many things that we are not aware of that we may need to make some adjustments to kind of stay within those themes that we are saying are important.
I'd like to just chime in, and I remember the conversation well, and chiming in in that conversation also. I think that under objectives three, it does say ensure financial stability or sustainability. And that, to me, does support what our concerns were. And I think that as we, it becomes more specific down the road with actual, you know, implementing these strategies, and then adjusting and metering and benchmarking to see whether, in fact, we meet those, that it offers the opportunity to continually upgrade and improve that. But I think language-wise, I'm comfortable personally with ensure financial sustainability. And I think then 3A also speaks to that. I'd be comfortable if it also said, and ensure sustainability. It's kind of repetitive, but it's still, you know, would make it even stronger.
I think what, so I'm certainly in alignment with Ms. Grant and prior conversations we've had about creativity and innovation around ensuring financial stability. And perhaps that is a way to include that priority for us, that we're looking beyond what traditional methods and means may be, so that our district can ultimately be financially sustainable and not completely dependent on decisions that perhaps, you know, others make for us. Am I hearing correctly, though, that this could come out as an action item? Is that, Dr. Roby, what you were saying, perhaps?
So like, what I'm saying is that as you look at the framework and the themes, they all go across. And then the actions, because these are the initiatives, what we're working on now, then there are the actions to say, for 3A, what are the actual actions that we're able to point to? And then it should align to the objective of three, and then the overall theme of creating a culture of trust, collaboration, and stewardship.
And I'll just add that I think that this clarity of expectations from the board is very helpful, and we will share that with the group that's going to be working on this tomorrow. Part of what I see happened with 3A is that if you focus on what I would consider sort of the key words of long-term fiscal analysis and sustainability. I mean, that's what I heard the board talk about. We need a long-term plan where we're doing honest projections, that we're being creative about the use of our resources, you know, balancing enrollment with capacity, with revenue, to become sustainable. The group that worked on this was also working on a culture of trust, collaboration, and stewardship. And so I think words like ongoing, accessible, transparent kind of got interwoven in there because of that part of the concept. But I agree with what Dr. Roby said. I think one of the steps will be to come up with metrics for each of the objectives. And so that is where the board can say, when we say ensure financial stability, we are looking for these types of results. And then let's make sure that this initiative is going to achieve those.
And I'm fine, I'm completely fine with that. I guess I just wanted to say something, because we did fit that into a broader, like you said, they were looking at something broader. And so that point was already fit in to something where it could be lost. And also, I do understand how it works, where there will be the actionable items. But I'm not saying that we have the answer. So to Dr. Baker's point, he's like, you know, are you going to open an office? Are you going to, I don't, I don't know what these opportunities look like. And so if it's only caught at the end, where we have to outline the action items, we may be pigeonholing ourselves to these one or two things instead of saying, because in this sense, to me, revenue right now means what funds are the district given? Not what funds is the district creating? And so, yes, we can absolutely be responsible with the funds that we're given. We can be transparent, but that's not providing us to think outside of that. There's no language that leads to say, let's think outside of that in an ongoing fashion. And if we're all okay with that, I'm okay with that. I just wanted to be clear of why I was bringing it up at this phase instead of the end phase.
So I think that maybe perhaps, that if there's a fourth column of action steps, I think it, and I don't, I'm not sure I understand exactly what the conversation is around revenue. I get, I think I get the point. But I think that, and when I suggested office, in the end, I would like the next column to say, what is it that we're going to be doing and who's going to be responsible for it? So if we use, like, say, changing discipline practices, what is that, what does that mean?
Yeah, so.
That's, I think, where I get, and I think that that would get to, maybe not pigeonholing us in terms of actions, but at least it would give some senses about, what does it mean to be more sustainable?
Right.
Or what does it mean to, some of these are specific, like telling our stories. But like, yeah, I mean, maybe you have the.
I'm fine with where we are.
My thing is more of moving on to the next, then I think that we get some sense of action. So if we're going to do something to address the scholar behaviors, is that, is that, who is, who's going to do that?
Right, so that's what starts tomorrow.
Yeah, okay, that's why, yeah. Then I think it gets to the questions that, you know, that we were debating or discussing.
So I'll just run through kind of what's next to answer your question, Dr. Baker. So I'm sorry.
Before you do that, though, I do, I think I want to, you know, sort of support the theme that Ms. Grant is offering here. And I don't know exactly what that looks like either. But I think, you know, something that speaks to a district, the district's commitment to consider creative or non-traditional methods of fiscal sustainability. I think that should be a part of what we're doing if we're talking about long-term strategic planning, as opposed to continually being sort of the victim of circumstance based on what's provided to us. And no, I don't think we should be selling fish dinners on Fridays necessarily. But unless we really broaden our thinking to invite creativity, we don't know what we may come up with. And again, I don't necessarily have immediate suggestions, but I think the theme behind this is trying to do things differently than we have historically done them, or at least consider doing them differently than we have historically done them.
And I would say that that's what we are attempting to do. And obviously, the proof is in the work that is yet to come. It's building the plane out. And I do, I mean, I don't want to get caught in the semantics of words, because then that does, then it narrows our focus. But if we're saying that we're creating, and you know, and this will get to kind of the next stage of the action, and then also kind of who's on the different committees so that we are engaging divergent voices, so that we are able to have some of that creativity and things of that nature.
Yeah. Well, I guess the question maybe to ask is, is the board comfortable with going forward with this language, knowing that this notion of creative ways to generate revenue needs to be part of the thinking in 3A? Or are you looking to actually change the way 3A is worded?
I would suggest that you amend that. Maybe go back and amend it to include, you know, transparency and sustainability and innovative approaches for future funding, or something to that effect. Or anything that could address some of the concerns that have been raised, that gives it more specificity.
Yeah, I'm thinking the same, but I see in my peripheral shaking your head over here, and I'm curious, Dr. Roby, if you have some thoughts on that.
And because I, again, the, I think that the, I don't want to get lost in the idea around creativity of voices. But if we start amending and wordsmithing this, then I think we, it takes on a different notion. That's, I guess that's what I'm trying, and so I hear fully that, you know, making sure that we are looking at creative ways to get to that fiscal responsibility and sustainability. I hear that, but I'm just a little, and maybe I'm overthinking it, and I don't intend to. But if I, if we start picking apart and saying, well, I want this word instead of this word, then I think it loses the intent of what we've empowered our staff to do at this, up to this point. Because we did agree that this phase would kind of, this was not necessarily something that we were, that the board would be voting on. It was allowing them to kind of develop the full plan.
So how about Ms. Greenway, in your engagement with the sub-team, at least just offer broadly some of this conversation? And I do agree with what Dr. Roby had, but to allow them to, you know, massage it if they choose to, based on the feedback that you give.
And let me be clear, understanding that this process, it is iterative and it does evolve. I just, I'm a little, just a little nervous about the wordsmithing of some of this work without having included the folks who were doing some of the background. That doesn't feel as respectful to, does that make sense?
It does. Just to go back to whoever wordsmithed it, to include the concerns that have been raised.
Right now.
No.
Okay.
No, I just thrown out a few words that could possibly be.
About our process. I mean, here we are in a public meeting, getting a report out. I really like, I mean, strategic team, theme six, and all of the, it's just interesting. I mean, we've been through one of these before, and this is really powerful in terms of where we've come as a district, that we are, that there's been so much input. And it really is reflective in those, in those categories that you have there. So even to be able to talk about that issue and go back and say, hey, here's another dimension to this that, that needs to be included. How do we, how do we do that? You know, I, we're going to be the better for it as a district. So I really appreciate the conversation and the fact that we have that kind of wording that we can, you know, discuss and go back and brainstorm. So really appreciate that.
All right, well, we are providing coaching to each of the team, the initiative owners. And so I think this is mine. Yes, Stacy's nodding, so I've got it. I'll make sure that as that group does its work, that this is baked into their, their action planning. Okay, should we move forward? Okay, so it's now February, and we are here. So after determining the staging, we have worked with the executive cabinet, I should, executive cabinet has worked, to identify senior-level sponsors who will be the champions for this work and accountable to Dr. Roby for seeing that it happens. But the initiative will actually have an owner that is responsible for kind of coordinating and being the lead person on getting the work done. And then each initiative will have a team of people from across the organization, and in some cases, from the community, where community partners might be instrumental to actually doing some of the work. The first thing they will do is create action plans. And so I didn't bring all the details on the action plans to the board, but that's certainly something that we can share. But each action plan goes through several steps to ensure that the work is internalized. So one of the things that we do is we ask the teams to rewrite the initiative without using any of the key words in the initiative, to force people to really internal. Like, if I can't say culturally responsive, how do I explain what that looks like? If I can't use the word sustainable, how do I describe what that result would be? And then to also detail, what is the current practice or behavior that needs to change? And when we're finished, what should that look like? So that we're very clear, as we're thinking about the work to do, we're shifting the district from this to this. Each initiative will also have a stakeholder engagement plan. So to your point, for the ones that are really student-facing, there will be a plan to make sure that students have voice and are giving feedback sure that students have voice and are giving feedback on how they're going. And then the work plan, which is what you were kind of looking for, Dr. Baker, like, literally lays out the action steps, the timeline, the person or department responsible, and flags any new resources to the district that would be required for implementation. I want to point out that not all of these 16 initiatives are going to wrap up at the end of the next school year. So it's like a Gantt chart, you know? Everything's going to start, these 16 start, some might finish in a year, some might finish in four years. Then decisions will be made about which ones launch the year after that. And so their trajectory will be dependent on the nature of the initiative, and that will all be laid out in the action plan. There's also some risk assessment that's part of the action planning, thinking about interdependencies. And then our last effort with the district will be to help think about the outcome and objective measures. And we do have some tools for ongoing monitoring and reporting that we will also share with the district. I'll say that the most important part of the monitoring process in our experience, yes, it's important to have accountability for reporting how things are going, but the one thing we know about a strategic plan is that it won't go according to plan. And so where strategic plans stop and become just a doorstop is people run into issues. They run into conflicts of time. They run into lack of resources. They run into controversy. And then they stop and turn their attention to the immediate, and the strategic plan just gets stuck. So that's really the role of the Executive Cabinet and Dr. Roby is to problem solve and to check in, and when things run into roadblocks, to work to overcome those so that this important work actually gets completed. So that's where we're going from here, starting tomorrow, where we will be training the initiative owners aligned to each of these 16 in the action planning process. Any further questions?
I have a question with regards, I'm looking at the teams. And so I guess I see a lot of the usual suspects, so to speak. And so I'm just wondering, when I look at the community partners, how are we going to engage in a more innovative, diverse of thought process when we go back to our same partners who are doing this work but per se may not even be getting the outcomes that we, that they would want for their program? So I have a question really about that, like, how are we, how are we being intentional in making sure that we're getting diverse thought processes from our teams? Because again, I'm looking and I see the usual suspects, and I think we'll get some usual outcomes in that, in that regard, so.
So what we did, what you're looking at on the teams part, that was the last phase of the initiatives. What, what this next phase is, there's a different list of, of folks that we've added to, and there will be other opportunities. And it's, again, it's, you have to kind of keep asking, keep going back, keep asking. But the people who are being trained, there are additional folks outside of the initiative groups, so that have been added into the mix that are going to get trained and then create schedules of what, what the reporting mechanisms will be. But we do continue to plan on continually ask community partners where it makes sense for the different themes and, and be innovative. And then, you know, all we can do is invite.
I think that is our last slide.
Okay, I guess no other questions for Ms. Greenware and Mr. Moe? And we will move forward to our action items. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We do have our first action item, approval of the Kent ISD Schools of Choice Resolution. Ms. Natasha Neal?
Good evening, President Ross, Dr. Roby, and board members. This is a resolution that we sign every year. This is the same resolution that you guys saw last year, which is that we will participate in Section 105(c) with the Kent ISD as far as schools of choice and their timeline in, in regards to students who are outside of our district enrolling in GRPS. So typically each year, we allot for 500 seats for students who are not Grand Rapids, the city of Grand Rapids residents, to enroll in our, in our schools. And, and this, this allows us to do so without getting permission from the district in which they reside to enroll.
Gotcha. Yeah, question for Ms. Neal?
Do we, do we have a limit to how much we allow, I guess, out of our district? Or?
No, so we don't have a limit. And so we open 500 seats. We typically get about 230 to 250 students. We just go high, just in case, we get an influx of people who are interested. We don't limit the students who come into Grand Rapids. Some school districts do siblings only, or they only do kinders, but we don't put a limit on our, on our numbers. We just open it up.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Neal. Guess that we don't have any questions. Do I have a motion to approve the Kent ISD Schools of Choice Resolution?
All moved.
For.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Grant, yes. Ms. Lewis is excused. Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
President Ross?
Yes. And that takes us to the purchasing agenda and a host of things for Mr. Obers.
Yes. This is the Obers slate.
Hello again.
Hello, a long time no see.
Number of action items, as President Ross mentioned, the first being the purchasing agenda, which went to the Finance Committee last week, and they approved it. What is new is an addendum. We had a couple of things that, that time is of the essence that needed to get on the agenda and approved by the board this evening. First being a field trip, close-up foundation for our middle school and high school kids. The total cost of 272,000, that it would be for a May travel out to Washington, D.C. for educational opportunities. And then, as I mentioned earlier, we're in the guts of the Innovation Central renovation. And as part of that bond project, a, a big chunk of that renovation is a new HVAC system. So what is on the addendum is the bids we got back for the actual equipment, again, given supply chain challenge, supply chain challenges, and the costs continue to go up, we need to get this, get this bid in and get this equipment ordered. So there are one, two, three, four different organizations by virtue of our RFP process that will be involved in that total cost of the equipment is 2.9 million. And so I certainly, if any board members has any questions on their purchasing agenda, be happy to answer those also.
Any question for Mr. Obers on the purchasing agenda? Have a motion to approve the purchasing agenda?
Moved.
For.
All right, Ms. Grant, yes. Ms. Lewis is excused. Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
President Ross?
Yes. And there's a purchasing agenda addendum, Mr. Obers? Or was that included?
I just talked about, yeah, I know, we'll need separate action on that also, which I just talked about, so.
See, we will need separate action on it.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry.
To approve the addendum?
Support.
All right, Ms. Grant is a yes. Ms. Lewis is excused. Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
President Ross?
Yes. Thank you. And Budget Amendment One, Mr. Obers?
Yeah, we've got, as Ms. Shaki mentioned earlier in her report in the Finance Committee, we have three, Amendment One for three of our funds, the three funds that you're required by law to approve budgets, the General Fund, the Debt Retirement Fund, and the Special Revenue Fund. Briefly on the Debt Retirement Fund, the changes in, the amendments in your packet there, the, as we normally do this time of year, we adjust the budget for final assessed values that aren't all available yet when you pass the budget back in June. So significant increase in taxable values this year in excess of 4.5%, I believe. And then also, as Ms. Shaki mentioned, we closed on that $9.5 million bond refunding on December 21st, so that's now reflected as an amendment to the Debt Retirement Fund. Special Revenue Fund, there's three or four different funds in that, the major one being the Food Service Fund, which is all federal dollars. There's just some minor amendments to that, that particular fund. The big one is, again, as Ms. Shaki mentioned earlier, the largest Amendment One General Fund in at least as long as Rhonda's been around, in 20 years. And that is because, again, back when the budget was passed in June, we assumed a 250 per student, $250 per student increase in the foundation allowance. It came at 589, additional money in some other areas. Our enrollment came in about just over 200 more than we had budgeted back in June. So I don't want to spend a lot of time on this unless there's particular questions, but most of the general, if you look at the, on the screen here, again, the General Operations column, you'll see most of the increase in the revenue side related to that, what I just mentioned, the additional students and the additional state foundation allowance revenue. Again, foundational allowance is broken up in two parts, one from the local 18 mil, not, or homestead, non-homestead, or homestead property tax, non-homestead property tax, sorry. And then, yeah, the portion comes from the state. So there's two pieces of that. The grant column, again, the grants column has no impact on fund balance, okay? Whatever, whatever revenue adjustments we make, we make the same adjustments on the expense side. Most of the grant, the big dollar amounts relate to the ESER money. Again, we only had really ESER I back in, in June. Now we have ESER II and ESER III, and we are presuming some spending of those dollar amounts, as I just talked about a little bit earlier in the meeting. So you look, you look on down that Grants column, both in the revenue and expense side, you'll see, on the revenue side, if you look at line AR, ASAT, you'll see ESER II and ESER III, ESER Equity Grant, Education Equity Grant, which is still one of those smaller, earlier ESER grants, we still have money to spend on that. Some carryover from our title programs that we have every year. Title programs are only September year-end, so we never know in June, when you pass the budget, just how much of that is to be carried over because we have another three months to spend it before it runs out. On the expense side, again, most of ESER-related increases, again, as Ms. Shaki mentioned, this board, you may recall, approved all new union agreements, which in many cases, well, included compensation increases ranging from 2% to, I think, 18%. And then plus the, some central office and then administrator, and that study we did also resulted in some increases. So we built those increases in estimates for the remainder of the year. There's always an adjustment to the benefit package. We have open enrollment, which begins on January 1st, so pending what choices there were, hard cap went up 3.8% on January 1st. All those, we make adjustments for, and that's the majority of the expense side of things. So let me just throw up here, and I'll answer your questions here in just a second, but the General Fund is always concerned about the impact on fund balance. This is, in the screen history, the fund balance, again, both the board, board policy says a goal of 10%, between 5% and 15%. The state early warning minimum is 5%. As you can see here, if you look at the yellow column, that's where we ended up last fiscal year with almost a 13% fund balance. The original budget is the gray column there, down to 6.23, but with amendment, we picked up some fund balance at the end of, after the audit of 2021. We pick up about million, 1.2 million on Amendment One. So the projected fund balance now at, at June 30th of this year would be the 20.2 million, the orange column there at the very top line, or a fund balance percent, about 13.7%. So questions I can answer about any of that? It's, it's, it's good. I mean, it's, you know, in the years I've been here, generally, we're, we're fighting to retain fund balance, but we are able to build it. And we tend to be conservative in the January, there's still a lot of things that, that haven't flowed, haven't flowed through yet, again, just a couple of months' worth of compensation adjustments. So we intend to be back here in May with a second amendment to the budget, as usual. So any questions on that? And I will need three separate motions for each of the funds.
Gotcha. Any questions on the General Fund Amendment, Mr. Obers? Okay, you want to just continue with the Special Revenue? We'll.
Yeah, I just mentioned that earlier, just, just nothing there, just some minor adjustments to the Food Service Fund, but no, nothing of significance there. There is no fund balance requirement for the Special Revenue Fund or the Debt Service Fund, Debt Service Funds, I mentioned earlier, just some adjustments based on the assessed value and that, and that refunding, so.
All right, thank you. So can we get a, a motion for the Budget Amendment for the General Fund?
Motion for approval?
For.
All right, Ms. Grant, yes. Ms. Lewis is excused. Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
President Ross?
Yes. And maybe we have a motion for a Budget Amendment regarding the Special Revenue Fund?
All moved.
For.
All right, Ms. Grant, yes. Ms. Lewis is excused. Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
President Shaki? I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm reading from the paper. President Ross?
And a motion for amendment to the Debt Retirement Fund?
Approved. Support.
All right, Ms. Grant, yes. Ms. Lewis is excused. Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
President Ross?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Obers. And we have one final action item, Policy 8130, first reading, if Ms. Lusk is of.
And if the board would be so kind, I'm not quite sure what the process is for how you do a first reading. Do I, do I read the language of the policy?
Uh, yeah, if you could just maybe offer the, the highlights for the edits.
Okay.
It was in the folks' board packet, so folks probably got some look at it, but maybe just highlight any changes of note.
Great. So I mentioned this a little bit earlier, but this is the first reading of Policy 8130, searches of motorized vehicles, lockers, and students. And there are two primary changes to this policy. The first one is that the Policy Committee has included language identifying the policies and procedures for when district personnel is permitted to search through students, electronic devices owned by students. And then the second one is that we have, or the Policy Committee, rather, has specifically defined what is not included in a strip search, so that we can ask students to remove typical outdoor clothing, such as hats, gloves, coats, and scarves, and other things of that nature, without delving into strip search territory.
I think it's important to note that, again, no strip searches are allowed. Again, so the idea was just when you talk about students' clothing, what areas may be appropriate to search, and that's being restricted to simply outer clothing, like a coat or hat or gloves or things of that nature. So just wanted to clarify that, no strip searches. So I don't, any, any other questions? So, I don't, any, any other questions about the electronic device component, or anything of that nature? No? Okay, well, can we have a motion to approve the first reading of Policy 8130?
All moved.
Support.
Thank you, Ms. Lusk.
All right, Ms. Grant, yes. Ms. Lewis is excused. Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Ms. Shakki?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
President Ross?
Yes. And then a final motion of the night for the consent agenda grouping?
Motion for approval?
Support.
All right, Ms. Grant, yes. Ms. Lewis is excused. Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Ms. Shakki?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
And President Ross?
Yes. Okay. No board president announcements. Do we have any public comment card for non-agenda items?
We do. I will give a brief overview of how public comment works. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person. We will set time for you here and keep track of that for you. You will need to please state your full name before providing your comments. And we do ask that you complete your comment within those three minutes. Board members do not respond to public comment, but we do listen intently, and your concerns will be brought to the attention of the appropriate staff. Can I please have Tia Sanders join us?
Hi, y'all. Hi, so, um, cool, three minutes. I'm trying to do this as fast as possible. I hope you guys are having a great day. I wanted to share my mantra, peace begins with me. So, when I'm not having a good day, that really helps me get there. Um, so, one, I wanted to comment on something that came up, because I thought it was very interesting that Ms. Grant brought up. I would have never thought of, but I think it's brilliant. Um, you made a comment, Dr. Roby, about not wanting to go into semantics. And I am a language teacher, that's my specialty language. So, if you ask me what language I speak, I would say the Negro dialect of English, or Ybonyx. I do that intentionally because I'm trying to make a statement. So, when you talk about language, words are, those semantics are important. And I think that, oh, I, who, don't let me get into language, I love language, it's beautiful. But I think those semantics are important because, especially about that specificity, because it only takes one strong voice, like regardless of everybody else saying, okay, yeah, we think it's a good idea. But if they're not brave enough to speak up, it only takes one strong voice to shut that down. So, I think having that language, specifically, is important. And I want to also say, I hope I don't take up my three minutes to talk about this, because this is not what I meant to do. But, um, I also want to say some ideas of doing that, we do that in the schools all the time. We have, we do No Uniform Day, where we collect money from the students because they're not wearing uniforms. That's generating money for income for the school to do whatever we want to do with it. So, why can't the district do that? And what's wrong with a cookout? I mean, especially if you've got a district of a majority of black and brown people. I would buy the food if you're having a little picnic, GRPS. I mean, I live here, that goes into my paycheck. So, that's something I would totally, and it would go to Dr. Baker, what you were saying about the behaviors, the behaviors happen because we don't have enough support, the right type of support. Why? Because we don't have the money, or so they say, to pay for it. So, if you want that to happen, then I would, I think that's a good idea, to figure out some self-sustaining ways to actually generate that income. For example, like hiring teachers that stay in GRPS, so their tax dollars will actually stay here. So, my point I wanted to talk about was retaining teachers of color. And I want to mention that I am a teacher who owns a house in Baxter Street, yes, right across from Joel Taylor. That's my community. This is my community. So, Grand Rapids is by proxy GRPS, I love it, because I love Grand Rapids, I love being here. So, that means I love GRPS, too, and I'm going to stay here. However, I was recently interviewed by an adjunct professor at the University of Columbia, and her, her podcast is called, what is it called? The Exit Interview. So, this podcast is about teachers who are leaving the, their districts, or just the profession in general. And she, I got on that because recently I has, I spoke up about institutionalized racism that is affecting teachers of color in this district. And so, when I was voicing the concerns of what I was experiencing, you know, on Twitter, @Edgy underscore English, if you'd like to follow me, and I talk more about the institutional racism I have to talk about, that I experience on my YouTube channel, Talk English with T. But I'll make this quick, wrap it up. I brought up the fact that I think, after having that experience, that I'm going to get fired on a technicality. I already knew it. Because I have a saying in my, um, in my classroom, ohana means family, and family means nobody get left behind or forgotten. Now, that means in a school, I'm busy. I, I mean, not just even busy, let me tell you, I work three jobs. To be able to pay my bills, I'm a single woman, I don't have nobody in my house paying my bills with me. So, I work three jobs. I come, but I come to this school and I deliver. I told you, Dr. Roby, that I raised my students' ELA scores on the standard assessment from 45 percent cent to a 70 percent. I'm delivering. I'm here doing what I got to do. Sure, I have areas improving, but...
Ms. Sanders, I will ask you to...
Speed it up, okay, okay. So, today, I got written up because I forgot that I had recess. Because if you're a teacher, you know, there's a million things that you have to do. And I forgot recess prob, uh, uh, duty after the second time. Now, me and the teacher, I went to her, because, of course, it's important. I told her, okay, let me work one of your shows. She was like, no, she was understanding, because she's a teacher, she gets it. She was like, okay, um, I'll knock on your door to make sure you have it, that you don't miss it. But the institution was not that understanding. In fact, one of the things I wanted to point out about retaining teachers of color is that you got to look at the little things. You have to look at the details. Don't just brush over them. Because I'm not going to leave this district on my own. I love teaching. I feel like that's what I was meant for. But I strongly believe that I will be pushed out of the classroom by the microaggressions utilized through the tools of the institution. I used to work as a manager. I know how it works.
Ms. Sanders?
So, I just want to say that, and I hope I provided some insight to you guys about retaining teachers of color. And I hope I'm heard. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other public comment cards? No. Okay. Superintendent's comments?
All right. Just, I want to double down on how proud I am of the Superintendent Scholar Advisory Group. They did a phenomenal job. They represented not only themselves, their schools, but our district very well. We've had several conversations with elected officials. Many of you, as elected officials, have commented on the work that our scholars are doing. And so, for both Jackie and Luca, who represent the student group, you did a phenomenal job. But also for the others that were there, to be able to speak their truth and their, their experiences in real time, so that our decision-makers were able to hear that. I think it's really, really powerful. This has been a great meeting overall, just with student voice. We had our scholars earlier, our elementary scholars, about the MLK program. And again, those are all examples of kids using their minds well, using their voice and their agency well. The last thing I just want to share, which I thought was kind of fun, I, I think I shared with the board that we were doing Taste Buddies. And for our community as a whole, this is a phenomenal program where, through our Office of Family Engagement, has cooking classes, where you can do cooking classes and, at, at home, virtually. And my husband and I did a Taste Buddy class this past Thursday, and we did lasagna rollups. I will tell you, and I'm saying it publicly, he is the chef, I am the sous chef. So, I, and this is the only time where I let him fully, kind of just like, this is how we do. And so, Ms. Masco, who kind of leads Taste Buddies, also had a collage of the pictures of the kids and what their dinner looked like at the end. And I thought that I would just share this with you all, just, just to see kids in action in their homes, making a great meal with their families. It was a lot of fun. I had two of our board members on, on the call, and I think if you haven't done Taste Buddies, you have got to do it. It is a lot of fun. We enjoyed it. We already are talking about, when are we going to do it again? So, I wanted to share that with you all. And those are my comments for this evening.
Dr. Baker?
Oh, just, I, I, I want to go back again to the legislative luncheon on Friday and the contributions that you guys made, and your, and your peers. I, I think that this, this would have been a meeting to have recorded and have those voices, I don't know if it was recorded, maybe. Just because, I mean, this is going to sound bad, it's just like the, the situations that you guys described in the schools are bleak. And the, the elected officials needed to hear that. And when I spoke to the elected officials in the room, both Republican and Democrat, they are hearing that from other places across the state. And as Dr. Roby said, from what you learned in DC, there's this universality of bleakness. And we have to address this issue. And I really appreciate what, what you guys said in terms of your analysis, and, and making sure that those, that it was articulated the way you did, so that way, these elected officials could, can take actions related to that. So, and, and I believe that some of the things that you guys discussed, they are working on. So, I really appreciate, it was just really incredible. If it was taped, and I don't know if the other board members would get a chance to see it, that it couldn't be there, but it was pretty incredible. So, thanks.
I'm up?
Yes.
I'm going to bridge off of what Dr. Roby talked about with Taste Buddies, because my, my four kids and I were able to attend virtually. And the kids had a riot. They got to participate in making the food. And it was just so well put together. We got, they got the food at school the, the day before, and all the ingredients came in a bag, and they took it home. And it has, like, a recipe book that comes with it, but it has an educational proponent that I just thought was very well thought through. And then, while our food was cooking, it came with a game that we got to play as a family while we were waiting for the lasagna to be cooked. And it had math problems on it, and different word problems. And then it also just had ridiculous things, like jump backwards five times and then spin around, or whatever. But, um, we just had a wonderful time as a family. And I also thought it was such a cool way to take a larger district and to be able to make it feel like a small one, because we had kids from all different schools on the screen. And it just, it felt like family. It was wonderful. And then I also want to highlight that I went to the Michigan Music Conference at the Amway a couple of weeks ago, as a music teacher. And I showed up to one of the sessions called Engaging Students from Challenging Backgrounds, and it was the GRPS team. So, it was a bunch of music teachers, Maggie was there, and they did a wonderful job representing GRPS. I had no idea that they were leading it, to be honest, when I walked in the room. But I was so happy to see them there. And they just seemed so confident and represented us well. So, that was wonderful.
I'd just like to share the excitement that I feel, being part of the district and seeing all the wonderful things that we're doing, innovative approaches to, to learning, and just a, just a real happy feeling. And then to see in action, you know, student voice being, being appreciated even here on this body, I think is, is really a forward move. But I would like to, to highlight John Helmuth, who I, I was able to listen to a whole interview that he did recently, and it was, it was shared on social media, and I gave him a little kudos on it. Because it was just exciting. And we have so many positive things going on in Grand Rapids Public Schools. And, and I just, you know, I come here and it's almost giving me chills, you know? It's, it's great, great, so.
All right, well, I just want to also talk about the Legislative Luncheon, which was just a phenomenal experience. Our student reps were extraordinary. And I actually have a couple of quotes that you both said that I'd love to share, and I invite you to correct me if I got them wrong. So, Luca was referencing our need for resources. And he said, if I got it correctly, equity is the opportunity to succeed at any cost, meaning you have what you need to be successful. And he also said, if you have the capability or ability to support others, you have the responsibility to support them. And that's what he told our legislators and us as leaders in the room. And Jackie said, just like Mr. Helmuth had referenced, at the very end of the meeting, you tell us that we are the future, but how can we do tomorrow if we can't do today? And those were such extraordinary statements that I couldn't have said better myself. So, I'm just so proud and so honored to have been in the room with you. Thank you for lifting up your voice and being bold and strong. It was extraordinary. Representative Hood, at the end, asked our scholars if any of them were thinking about becoming teachers, and what would they need to become teachers. And I'm just proud to state that Mr. Chizalm, Luca, talked about his desire to become a teacher. And although I have no authority, I happen to think there might be a spot here for you in the future, should we be so lucky to have you return. Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
So, again, the Legislative Luncheon was a big deal for all of us, but the Student Advisory Council, Dr. Roby, thank you for bringing that to our district and amplifying the voice. I think also Jackie and Luca, I appreciate the way you highlighted the other students, and gave them the courage to speak up and share their thoughts. And your leadership was extremely demonstrated and received. So, thank you so much.
Well, Luca, do you have any closing comments?
Um, I do, actually. Um, I guess I just want to express my gratitude, kind of building off a lot of the comments so far, on the opportunity that we had in order to share our voice at the luncheon. But more specifically, I, I want to just say that I'm thankful, not for the opportunity that me and Jackie had to speak, but also the opportunity that we gave to the rest of the Superintendent Scholar Advisory Council. Because obviously, me and Jackie are kind of chosen to be kind of generally the delegates to this larger board, and maybe the more legislative side of the district. But I think that really, that group of students that we've assembled in the Advisory Council, those are really brilliant kids. And I think that they deserve the opportunity to speak just as much as us. And I think that they really demonstrated that. And I think that they have a lot of really important stuff to say, obviously. And I think that they did a great job articulating that. And I hope that in the future, there's more opportunities, not just for, you know, the board representatives, but also for, you know, a larger representation of voice, because obviously, it's there. And obviously, they have a lot of really powerful stuff to say on the matter. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Jackie?
I have to piggyback off, too. Um, yeah, I also want to thank you guys for this opportunity. I, I can't say that I would have gotten here without any of your guys' support. And I hope that one day, there can be more seats open up for more students. It's such a wonderful opportunity, and it opens so much doors. And I just want to encourage, if you know your students, push them forward, because they have those voices inside of them. And they won't say anything unless we encourage them, unless we push them forward. And that's where we have our leaders, and we become, we become what we're taught. And if we're teaching our students to become leaders, they will become leaders.
Thank you. Reverend Mathias?
Yeah, I, I think one of the, the questions that was asked of, of the students there were, you know, what are your classmates saying? And what was really cool to hear is that they had stories to say in talking to their peers. So, it's not just them, they're talking to their peers in their respective schools, and getting their input and bringing it back. And I really appreciated that, that it wasn't just, well, this is my opinion, but you know what? I was talking to so-and-so, and they were saying this. And it was really exciting. The other thing is, I really appreciated where our, our plan is heading. I haven't seen language that, that's inclusive, and that's, and that's taking into account the, the, the community and stakeholders like never before. And I, and I think that obviously, it's, it's shaping what this plan is becoming. So, again, I really appreciate the way that this body has taken that, and allowed the community to speak, and, and opened it up many, many times, where it should have been closed, or it was ready to be closed. But hey, there's more voices. So, again, I, I really appreciate that. Well done. Well done.
All right, any comment?
Yeah, I don't think I can say anything else about how great the luncheon was. But I do want to thank Mr. Helmholdt. Having students really run the meeting isn't something that we've done before. And I know when we were discussing, there was conversation like, will there be a scripted speech? Or, and I was like, whoa. What if we did something crazy and you guys just did not disappoint us at all? And I don't think we'll ever really go back to the way that we used to do things totally because of how you guys handled that. So it was a leap of faith to bring a group of legislators from both sides of the aisle in and allow students to speak really freely. But you guys did better than we could have ever imagined, so thank you.
I guess I don't really have any comment other than a joke for Mr. Helmholdt and the leap of faith. You know, he, that's really not your bag, so thank you for doing that, for sure. But no, I have no comment, meeting adjourned, thank you.